The board really appreciates everyone's commitment to public safety and just wanted to take a minute to recognize that and really thank everybody for their efforts. And a good reminder that Safety Week kicks off next week as well, but really appreciated that, that extra effort that went, that happened on the second day of school. Myself, along with Katie and Steve, also attended Dr. Winkelman's start of the year address to the staff and I wanted to again recognize the staff and the students in the administration who truly made this, this first day excellent and really exceptional with the performance of the, I guess I would say hashtag the place to be musical. If you, it was really amazing example of empowering personal excellence in every learner, truly. So if you haven't taken the time to watch it, please do. There's even a documentary on how it was made. So it was really very special. You can find all this information on our website, Barrington220.org, hashtag the hyphen place hyphen two hyphen B, the letter B. So it was really special and thank you to Ellie also for being a great reminder of empowering personal excellence in every learner every day. This evening, we started at 6:30 or a little bit later than 6:30. If, if it successfully passes this evening, our next board meeting would start at 6:00 PM. So please take note of that and watch for that change as the open session will start at 6:00 PM upon a successful passing of the motion later in the meeting. That's on September 17th. Make sure, Board, that you get your responses back to Janine today or tomorrow. They're due on our two to one meetings with Dr. Winkelman. Let's see. And in the next few weeks, if you haven't already, I think I've gotten mine, Board, you will receive your calendar invites for the PTO President's Council and Equity Group meetings if, if you are participating the second half of this year. If you can't attend these meetings, please make sure to let Janine or myself know if you're going to swap out because we can trade so that we've got two board members present at each one. Okay? Later this week, no, no, sorry. Wait. When does our first community presentation? Is that this week or next week?
It is this week.
It is this week. I put the wrong date on here.
We have a PTO evening meeting at Roslyn on Thursday night.
Right. But our first official community is next Monday, the ninth. I did do it. I did write it correctly. Thank you. So we will tour Barrington High School and meet in the lower atrium. Barry and I will both be there in attendance from the board. So board members, I think everybody has gotten back to us. So we do have board member presence at every single one of them. We've got two people on, on next week. I'll be there at station. Leah is going to be there at rows and Barry is going to be there on September 28th at the high school. So if we've got more than two people that show up, we have noticed all of the meetings, but if you're, if there's only three of us, remember one of us needs to stay silent. So if four people show up, then we will call the meeting to order.
Okay? So just to clarify, the 18th, 19th, and 28th, we currently only have one board member at each?
We have two board members on the ninth, one board member on the 18th, one on the 19th, and one on the 28th, is what I understand.
Awesome. Thank you.
We can still inform Janine if we're able to make it.
Yes. Perfect. Thank you.
We'll do today, not till midnight.
Oh, okay. Excellent. All right.
She asked that we get back to her today. And speaking of referendum, in front of you, you have some business cards and on the backside of the business cards, you can use them as you're talking to folks, is the QR code for the referendum information on our website.
Awesome. Thank you. Great idea.
Make sure you've got them for homecoming, which is September 28th. And let me know, Board, if you're interested in, in participating in the parade. Like Ellie said, they're, they're taking reservations if we want to be in the parade or not again this year. So let me know if you're available to do that. Couple more things. Petition circulation began on August 20th for school board candidates for the April 1st, 2025 election. The first day the petitions can be filed is November 12th and the last day is November 18th. And you can find the guide and everything on the State Board of Education of Elections website. Upcoming dates, Board, Thursday, I knew I had it on here. Thursday, we will hold our activity fair at the high school, which is a good opportunity for us to attend and, and participate. We have the ISB Lake County Division meeting on October 9th in the evening. And then the next morning, we have the Barrington Area Chamber of Commerce Legislative Breakfast. So make sure for, and then we've got Ed Redd on October 18th. So please get to Janine if you plan on attending any of those dinners and or breakfast events. Okay? And then I'll just leave with an exciting reminder of homecoming on September 28th, later this month. All right. So next up is public comment. We have one person signed up for public comment. I know, I thought about it too, but like, anything for a night, like, class?
The rowdy side of the table.
Welcome to our September 3rd, 2024 Regular Board of Education meeting. May we have a roll call, please?
Sandra Bradford.
Here.
Barry Altshuler.
Here.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Here.
Katie Carum.
Here.
Erin Chan Ding.
Here.
Steve Wang.
Here.
Diana Clapton.
Here.
All right. Would you rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Again, welcome, everyone. First up on our agenda is actually a public hearing. So do we have a, a motion to go into public hearing for the purpose of our tend to discuss our tentative budget?
So moved.
Okay. May I have a roll call, please?
Sandra Bradford.
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Yes.
Diana Clapton.
Yes.
Steve Wang.
Yes.
Diana Clapton.
Yes.
All right. Our hearing is closed. So first up on our agenda is very special. I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Winkelman.
Yes. So the board was hard at work this summer and we had a number of items that we addressed, but it was a little lonely. We didn't have our student reps during the summer months, during summer vacation, but we're excited. Our first student is joining us tonight, Ellie Ragnini. Go by Ellie, to provide an update from Barrington High School. So welcome. We're excited to have students back at our meetings.
Yeah, thank you for having me. I'm Ellie. I'm a senior in high school. I am involved in VHS TV and I'm from Student Council. I'm the communications officer. So I'm here representing student body.
Awesome. Is her mic on? Yep. Okay.
Okay.
Yep. So go ahead. Floor is yours to share updates from the high school.
I don't really have a lot of updates from the Student Council. We've only met a couple of times so far, but I know that everyone is really excited to start planning homecoming. We've started on the parade committee. We've started planning for the parade. We've had a couple of people sign up already to start the homecoming floats and everything. We've started planning, we started planning originally last year and I know everyone is really excited. Yeah.
Okay. Awesome. Any other updates from the start of school other than homecoming?
I don't think so, not yet.
Ellie, where can people check out the awesome VHS TV, like, sports kickoff video if they haven't seen it yet?
238 Studios, the YouTube channel.
Awesome. All right.
You shut down the streets for that one, right?
Yes, we did. At like 2:00 AM in the morning.
Very impressive. Very impressive. Very cool. Very cool. Any other questions for Ellie?
No, but I already gave Ellie credit and her fellow VHS TV photographers because parents know that their pictures are such a gift and they take such amazing pictures at events and athletic and sporting events. And I'm super thrilled she got the best picture of my son the other day. I love it.
But thank you guys. I hope you know that they're very much appreciated.
And not just the parents, but the whole community.
The whole community. Yes, sorry.
We love, we love to see them.
We look forward to updates throughout the year. So Ellie will rotate in at our meetings and I know we have our new theme this year of the place to be. So we look forward to hearing more about the place to be at future meetings. Awesome. Thank you.
We do have a certificate for you for joining us. Tonight, would it be okay if we did a picture together with Ellie in our first meeting?
Let's do it.
And swag.
And swag. We can't.
This is so special.
Should we go? You make two rows?
We're good.
All right. Ready? One, two, three, one, two.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you, Kelly. Good to have you.
All right. So next up is my report. I've got a few, couple of things here. I wanted to start by thanking our community, our parents, and especially our staff for cooperating and protecting each other on the second day of school this year while we also worked with our, collaborated with our police departments to protect everyone. The board really appreciates everyone's commitment to public safety and just wanted to take a minute to recognize that and really thank everybody for their efforts. And a good reminder that Safety Week kicks off next week as well, but really appreciated that, that extra effort that went, that happened on the second day of school. Myself, along with Katie and Steve, also attended Dr. Winkelman's start of the year address to the staff and I wanted to again recognize the staff and the students in the administration who truly made this, this first day excellent and really exceptional with the performance of the, I guess I would say hashtag the place to be musical. If you, it was really amazing example of empowering personal excellence in every learner, truly. So if you haven't taken the time to watch it, please do. There's even a documentary on how it was made. So it was really very special. You can find all this information on our website, Barrington220.org, hashtag the hyphen place hyphen to hyphen B, the letter B. So it was really special. And thank you to Ellie also for being a great reminder of empowering personal excellence in every learner every day. This evening, we started at 6:30 or a little bit later than 6:30. If, if it successfully passes this evening, our next board meeting would start at 6:00 PM. So please take note of that and watch for that change as the open session will start at 6:00 PM upon a successful passing of the motion later in the meeting. That's on September 17th. Make sure, Board, that you get your responses back to Janine today or tomorrow. They're due on our two to one meetings with Dr. Winkelman. Let's see. And in the next few weeks, if you haven't already, I think I've gotten mine, Board, you will receive your calendar invites for the PTO President's Council and Equity Group meetings if, if you are participating the second half of this year. If you can't attend these meetings, please make sure to let Janine or myself know if you're going to swap out because we can trade so that we've got two board members present at each one. Okay? Later this week, no, no, sorry. Wait. When is our first community presentation? Is that this week or next week?
It is this week.
It is this week. I put the wrong date on here.
We have a PTO evening meeting at Roslyn on Thursday night.
Right. But our first official community is next Monday, the ninth. I did do it. I did write it correctly. Thank you. So we will tour Barrington High School and meet in the lower atrium. Barry and I will both be there in attendance from the board. So board members, I think everybody has gotten back to us. So we do have board member presence at every single one of them. We've got two people on, on next week. I'll be there at station. Leah is going to be there at rows and Barry is going to be there on September 28th at the high school. So if we've got more than two people that show up, we have noticed all of the meetings, but if you're, if there's only three of us, remember one of us needs to stay silent. So if four people show up, then we will call the meeting to order. Okay?
So just to clarify, the 18th, 19th, and 28th, we currently only have one board member at each?
We have two board members on the ninth, one board member on the 18th, one on the 19th, and one on the 28th, is what I understand.
Awesome. Thank you.
We can still inform Janine if we're able to make it.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. We'll do today, not till midnight.
Oh, okay. Excellent. All right.
She asked that we get back to her today. And speaking of referendum, in front of you, you have some business cards and on the backside of the business cards, you can use them as you're talking to folks, is the QR code for the referendum information on our website.
Awesome. Thank you. Great idea.
Fancy.
All right. Make sure you've got them for homecoming, which is September 28th. And let me know, Board, if you're interested in, in participating in the parade. Like Ellie said, they're, they're taking reservations if we want to be in the parade or not again this year. So let me know if you're available to do that. Couple more things. Petition circulation began on August 20th for school board candidates for the April 1st, 2025 election. The first day the petitions can be filed is November 12th and the last day is November 18th. And you can find the guide and everything on the State Board of Education of Elections website. Upcoming dates, Board, Thursday, I knew I had it on here. Thursday, we will hold our Activity Fair at the high school, which is a good opportunity for us to attend and, and participate. We have the ISB Lake County Division meeting on October 9th in the evening. And then the next morning, we have the Barrington Area Chamber of Commerce Legislative Breakfast. So make sure for, and then we've got Ed Redd on October 18th. So please get to Janine if you plan on attending any of those dinners and or breakfast events. Okay? And then I'll just leave with an exciting reminder of homecoming on September 28th, later this month. All right. So next up is public comment. We have one person signed up for public comment. I know you've spoken before. Do I need to read the preamble? Is everybody okay if I skip the preamble and just invite Ellie up here?
Let's do it.
All right. Save us a minute here.
Good evening. Well, good evening. Hi. I'm here today to talk about Title IX and my name's Lei Yang. I have a kiss at VHS in Prairie. Recently, exactly last support meeting, I became aware of the board's ongoing efforts to update policies related to Title IX as a result of the very controversial changes made by the current administration to this legislation. I'm also aware that our school district actually was covered and protected from having to follow this by a preliminary injunction granted by the federal court, which was further upheld in the most recent Supreme Court ruling in August. So I'm here today to express my deep concerns regarding the proposed changes and urge this board to reject the proposed policy changes while this matter is being debated nationally and final ruling awaited. It is not only against prudent use of taxpayers' funded resources, but it could, it could potentially add a lot of confusion to the public and could potentially be very complicated in force as well. Practicality aside, these changes we've adopted pose significant moral and constitutional challenges. Title IX, as we all know, was enacted in 1972 with a noble purpose, which is to protect girls and women in education from discrimination based on sex. However, the revision by expanding the definition of sex discrimination to include gender identity now contradict and undermine the very purpose of this legislation. The changes would allow biological males to compete in women's sports, use women's locker room shower facilities, and have access to other sex-specific private spaces. While we must always show compassion and respect for every individual, we cannot disregard the rights and needs of the girls and women. Title IX was designed to protect and not to harm. We must ask ourselves, are we truly serving justice if we allow this to happen? Moreover, if the proposed changes, these proposed changes represent a direct infringement on free speech and the rights of individuals to express their beliefs without fear of retribution. If the board adopts these changes, it would compel students, teachers, and staff to affirm ideas and beliefs that may be contrary to their deeply held convictions. Forcing individuals to use language or endorse concepts that conflict with their conscience also creates an environment of fear and self-censorship. The imposition of these policies could set a dangerous precedent where dissenting voices are silenced. that, that extra effort that went, that happened on the second day of school. Myself, along with Katie and Steve, also attended Dr. Winkelman's start of the year address to the staff, and I wanted to again recognize the staff and the students and the administration who truly made this, this first day excellent and really exceptional with the performance of the, I guess I would say hashtag the place to be musical. If you, it was really amazing example of empowering personal excellence in every learner, truly. So if you haven't taken the time to watch it, please do. There's even a documentary on how it was made, so it was really very special. You can find all this information on our website, barrington220.org, hashtag the hyphen place hyphen two hyphen B, the letter B. So it was really special. And thank you to Ellie also for being a great reminder of empowering personal excellence in every learner every day. This evening, we started at 6:30 or a little bit later than 6:30. If, if it successfully passes this evening, our next board meeting would start at 6:00 PM. So please take note of that and watch for that change as the open session will start at 6:00 PM upon a successful passing of the motion later in the meeting. That's on September Make sure, Board, that you get your responses back to Janine today, or tomorrow, they're due, on our two to one meetings with Dr. Winkelman. Let's see. And in the next few weeks, if you haven't already, I think I've gotten mine, Board, you will receive your calendar invites for the PTO President's Council and Equity Group meetings if, if you are participating the second half of this year. If you can't attend these meetings, please make sure to let Janine or myself know if you're going to swap out, because we can trade, so that we've got two board members present at each one. Okay? Later this week, no, no, sorry. Wait, when is our first community presentation? Is that this week or next?
This week.
It is this week. I put the wrong date on here.
We have a PTO evening meeting at Roslyn on Thursday night.
Right. But our first official community-
Next Monday.
-is next Monday, the ninth. I did do it. I did write it correctly. Thank you. So we will tour Barrington High School and meet in the lower atrium. Barry and I will both be there in attendance from the board. So board members, I think everybody has gotten back to us, so we do have board member presence at every single one of them. We've got two people on, on, next week. I'll be there at Station. Leah's going to be there at Rose, and Barry's going to be there on September 28th at the high school. So if we've got more than two people that show up, we have noticed all of the meetings. But if you're, if there's only three of us, remember, one of us needs to stay silent. So if four people show up, then we will call the meeting to order.
Okay.
Okay?
So just to clarify, the 18th, 19th, and 28th, we currently only have one board member at each?
We have two board members on the ninth, one board member on the 18th, one on the 19th, and one on the 28th.
Okay.
Is what I understand.
Awesome. Thank you.
We can still inform Janine if we're able to make it.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
It's due today, not till midnight.
Oh, okay. Excellent. All right.
She asked that we get back to her today. And speaking of referendum, in front of you, you have some business cards, and on the backside of the business cards, you can use them as you're talking to folks, is the QR code for the referendum information on our website.
Nice.
Awesome. Thank you. Great idea.
Fancy.
All right. Make sure you've got them for homecoming, which is September 28th, and let me know, Board, if you're interested in, in participating in the parade. Like Ellie said, they're, they're taking reservations if we want to be in the parade or not again this year. So let me know if you're available to do that. Couple more things. Petition circulation began on August 20th for school board candidates for the April 1st, 2025 election. The first day the petitions can be filed is November 12th, and the last day is November 18th. And you can find the guide and everything on the State Board of Education of Elections website. Upcoming dates, Board, Thursday, I knew I had it on here. Thursday, we will hold our Activity Fair at the high school, which is a good opportunity for us to attend and, and participate. We have the ISB Lake County Division Meeting on October 9th in the evening, and then the next morning, we have the Barrington Area Chamber of Commerce Legislative Breakfast. So make sure for, and then we've got EdRed on October 18th. So please get to Janine if you plan on attending any of those dinners and/or breakfast events. Okay? And then I'll just leave with an exciting reminder of homecoming on September 28th, later this month. All right, so next up is public comment. We have one person signed up for public comment. I know you've spoken before. Do I need to read the preamble? Is everybody okay if I skip the preamble and just invite Ellie up here?
Let's do it.
Okay.
All right. Save us a minute here.
Good evening. Well, good evening. Hi, I'm here today to talk about Title IX, and my name's Leigh Young. I have a kiss at VHS at Prairie. Recently, exactly last support meeting, I became aware of the board's ongoing efforts to update policies related to Title IX as a result of the very controversial changes made by the current administration to this legislation. I'm also aware that our school district actually was covered and protected from having to follow this by a preliminary injunction granted by the federal court, which was further upheld in the most recent Supreme Court ruling in August. So I'm here today to express my deep concerns regarding the proposed changes and urge this board to reject the proposed policy changes while this matter is being debated nationally and final ruling awaited. It is not only against prudent use of taxpayers' funded resources, but it could, it could potentially add a lot of confusion to the public and could potentially be very complicated in force as well. Practicality aside, these changes we've adopted pose significant moral and constitutional challenges. Title IX, as we all know, was enacted in 1972 with a noble purpose, which is to protect girls and women in education from discrimination based on sex. However, the revision by expanding the definition of sex discrimination to include gender identity now contradicts and undermines the very purpose of this legislation. The changes would allow biological males to compete in women's sports, use women's locker room shower facilities, and have access to other sex-specific private spaces. While we must always show compassion and respect for every individual, we cannot disregard the rights and needs of the girls and women. Title IX was designed to protect and not to harm. We must ask ourselves, are we truly serving justice if we allow this to happen? Moreover, if the proposed changes, these proposed changes represent a direct infringement on free speech and the rights of individuals to express their beliefs without fear of retribution. If the board adopts these changes, they would compel students, teachers, and staff to affirm ideas and beliefs that may be contrary to their deeply held convictions. Forcing individuals to use language or endorse concepts that conflict with their conscience also creates an environment of fear and self-censorship. The imposition of these policies could set a dangerous precedent where dissenting voices are silenced and the principles of free expression are eroded. Our students deserve better. They deserve an environment that encourages critical thinking for the actions innocent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have this on our agenda later for an action item, so we, we can have discussion at that time.
We do.
All right, so next up is your report.
Okay, thank you. Switch gears here from the timer.
No timer for you.
No timer for me. All right, thank you, Janine. We'll go to the first slide. So our strategic plan, Framework 220, Barrington has built a reputation of our strategic plan really does drive a lot of the work of the district. And so our current plan consists of six strategic priority areas, and with each, within each, there are several objectives. For the 24-25 school year, we've added seven more objectives that we're going to be focused on. And during my reports this fall, I'm going to highlight one of those objectives in each of the reports between now and winter break. The first objective I'm going to highlight is support for our strategic priorities, which is listed on the screen. This is to develop processes and procedures for broadcasting the progress of Framework 220 and deliver internal and external communications for all of the priorities and objective areas. The spotlight at each of our board meetings is one way we are going to communicate the work that's being done this year. In addition, we are continuing to update our public dashboard so that our stakeholders can keep track of the work that is being done. So really encourage everyone, we'll, we'll make these more known and visible through my spotlights, following board meetings, app board meetings, social media, and so forth. But at any time, really want to highlight, there's so much information on our website connected to our strategic plan. If anyone on the board or anyone really in our community wants to see the work and how it's progressing and where we're at with completion of those, they can go to the website and see our progress. All right, next slide, please. Got a few recognitions tonight, starting with the board. So our Board of Education was recently recognized as earning the School Board Governance Award for 2024, so want to commend the board for all your good stewardship and leadership. The primary focus of this program is on full board development and participation. Effective school boards understand that excellence in local school board governance requires full board commitment to obtaining the knowledge, skills, and abilities critical to good governance. And out of the 852 school districts in Illinois, we are one of 42 to receive this award this year. So it's really good work, so we want to commend the board. It's fun to recognize good work at this table, as well as all the recognition we do for our students and staff as well.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, of course. I have two more recognitions. Oh, speaking of students and staff, we have three schools this year that earned the Apple Distinguished Schools Award. So this is a first-time recipient of this award for both Prairie and Station, so our middle schools have earned this distinction. I'm proud to acknowledge that Barrington High School is actually the second time receiving this Distinguished School Award from Apple. Schools selected for this distinction, it's based on their commitment to continuous innovation in education and using tools to inspire, imagine, and impact teaching and learning within our schools. So very proud of our secondary schools for earning this distinction, being recognized as Apple Distinguished Schools. And then, continue to humble brag about Barrington High School. Chicago Magazine, you know, they report on a lot of different, you know, best places to eat, best places to visit, and so forth, but they do have a school segment. It's been five years since they've released a school segment, but they just released in their recent issue, Best Schools and Best High Schools in the Chicagoland area. Our high school was ranked number seven, so in the top 10 for the Lake County in the suburban category. So very proud of our high school for that acknowledgement as well. Moving on, I have a couple more topics I'd like to highlight tonight in my report. Something new in Barrington schools this year was we are doing early release days four times this year, and the first one just occurred this past Friday. You know, and anytime you do something new, I think it's important that we communicate and highlight and share what is the purpose of these days, how are we using these days. So a little bit of explanation. So last Friday, it was amazing how much work was going on throughout the district and all of our buildings, really providing a dedicated period of time for our educators and staff to participate in targeted professional learning activities that are really aimed at enhancing student growth. We have Wednesday time and afternoon time throughout the year where we do a little bit of an early release, and sometimes it's hard to get without a sustained period of time to the root of the, the area you're trying to work on or provide enough professional development or really, you know, do that deeper dive. And so I asked our principals to provide some insight into the work they were doing. If you look at, I think just about every school's social media accounts, Friday through today have been posting all of the different activities, but a few things to highlight. Staff are involved in unpacking the learning standards, reviewing student data, and then planning instructional activities directly aligned with that analysis to support student growth. Other activities were connected to our strategic plan and the learner profile, designing instructional practice to promote ownership, student agency, leadership, and empowerment. On the slide, you see a number of pictures of our staff engaged in that work. I do want to highlight, this also provides an opportunity for staff beyond our education staff, that upper right corner, our entire Buildings and Grounds Department also got together to do additional professional development and training on that day too. So really trying to figure out all the different ways that we can maximize the use of those early release days, and of course, we have three more coming up, September 27th, March 20th, and April And then my next slide, next week is Safety Week. You mentioned that in, in your report as well. You know, it's an opportunity for our staff to work with our first responders and provide lessons, discussions, drills, and training all related to student safety. We created this a few years ago because, you know, you can do these different things throughout the year, and we will. We'll do different drills and trainings throughout. But having a concentrated week, we have found beneficial. It really opens up conversation among students, staff, and our community around safety because of the concentrated everyday focus on safety. You know, we made a commitment last year to make sure that safe crossings at lights and pedestrian crossings, as well as railroad crossings, that's built back into the Safety Week, and we're providing that instruction as well based on our community. I don't want to go too much further because I know Teresa Reiki and Josh will be up here a little bit later to talk about and do a little bit deeper dive into safety overall, but just wanted to highlight that this is an important week for us. Also want to take this opportunity to acknowledge, you know, we needed to call upon a lot of our training and understandings with safety at the second day of school, when we, as the school district, were one of many entities that was responding to an emergency that was occurring within our community. And just want to take an opportunity to really thank everyone, first starting with our students, that understood that we were making adjustments in the afternoon and delaying dismissal, as well as the patience from our community and our parents, and also commend our staff for making sure that the student's safety was the priority as we made adjustments to what was occurring and then trying to relay that information from law enforcement and how that would then play out for us as a school district. I appreciate the community feedback that we've received, either directly through buildings or through the district office or even board members. You know, when you have these situations that occur, it's important that we learn from them. And so we've debriefed, we've debriefed with our administrative staff, we've identified some things that went really well, and we've also identified some things that we would do differently in the future. We will have one more opportunity to debrief. We, we do have a standing safety and security committee that's a combination of both district staff and all of our police and fire in the area, and this will be one of the topics that we debrief and again, learn from so we can make improvements when we have our first safety and security meeting. So again, just a big thank you to everyone that, that helped on that day. And then my last slide, we have an administrative position that we're recommending on the Personnel Report this evening. Patricia Waldou is being recommended for our Assistant Director of Facilities. As you can see, Patricia, or she goes by Pat, has earned her degree from the University of Illinois in Fine and Applied Arts. In her work history, she has held a number of positions through U46, Elgin School District, from Office Manager to Coordinator to Assistant Director and Director of Plan Operations. So she brings a wealth of experience to our school district, and we look forward to welcoming Pat to District 220 pending board approval on the Personnel Report this evening.
So might she be at the next board meeting?
Yes, we're planning for Pat to be here at our next meeting on September 17th.
Awesome.
Yeah. And that concludes my report. Are there any questions from the board?
No, I just thought I'd point out, because I agree with you, obviously, day two was not how any of us anticipated. In hindsight, we can obviously always improve, for sure. But just on highlighting, I, I had heard from parents that, and I know Craig confronted that Mr. Kirk from Roslyn got on the bus and rode home with students who were in questionable areas, and stuff like that, that I don't know if everyone realizes, that staff, I mean, obviously, we, we all care about our children, but, I mean, above and beyond, and I just thought it should be highlighted because I thought, I know it, parents were so grateful.
No, well, well-
I mean, I know other staff did amazing things too. That was just the one that-
Yeah. Numerous stories like that occurred on that day of just really everybody stepping up, so thanks for mentioning that.
I want to piggyback on the Pioneer Press. I'm, you know, so impressed with Elgin High School and, you know, to be in the top 10 in Lake County, which includes Lake Forest and Highland Park and Stevenson. So, you know, it's, it's, it's good to be recognized. I want the community to understand, there were a lot of factors that were looked at, but one thing I, I think we have to be very, very proud of, they showed for, and, and this wasn't just Lake County, Cook County, all the collar counties, they shared the amount of money spent per student at each of the districts, and we were the lowest in Lake County and in Cook County. I didn't get a good look in, in McHenry and Kane, but just understand, we're providing a quality education and keeping, you know, the, the bottom line, you know, to represent our community, keeping the bottom line down. So I'm, you know, very proud of that. You know, our, our tax dollars are going to a quality product, and, you know, we're trying really hard to, to watch the, you know, the bottom line. So I hope people can review that Pioneer Press article, because it's, you know, it does look favorably on, on Barrington.
Thank you, Barry.
Also, just have a question. Is it, this is maybe for Janine or for, have we started planning for tours for the school board members? You know, some of the new additions, we wanted to kind of take a look at. Is that on someone's radar for the next couple of months or whatever? Okay, good. Just checking.
We'll get them ordered.
I'm anxious, I'm anxious to see some of the-
I was looking at the picture, I'm like, that's a new floor.
Yeah, I'm anxious to see the new stuff, so that's why I'm asking. Thank you.
Probably they need to teach for more than a week and a day.
And I'll just-
You know, to get organized before we come visiting.
Yeah. I'll just recognize Barry too for really pushing us with the board governance recognition that we received. So thank you, Barry, for-
It was a team effort, but I was excited to do it. Really was.
It was a lot of work. Yep.
Do we get olive wreaths or something, or crap?
You get new business cards.
Yeah, yeah.
There you go.
Now, I do appreciate how, you know, we each contributed to that application, and I think it kind of speaks to how we collaborate as a board as well. So, yeah, thanks for, for catalyzing us to do that. We can say we're one of 42.
That's right.
That's right. All right. Let's move on then to informational reports. We had two this week. Are there any questions? Comments on those? All right, let's move on to committee reports.
I had the opportunity to go to the Ed Foundation's annual meeting, and it was a lovely event, a little bit of celebration of all the good things that happened this year with the Ed Foundation and kind of welcoming in new trustees. And I think the last meeting of the year was kind of saying goodbye and thank you to the people who, like, stepped off. But lovely, lovely things that the Ed Foundation does for us, just to say thank you again. You know, there, there are donors contributing to give our schools extra programs and special opportunities, and it just keeps going and coming back. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Leah.
Finance Committee met earlier today. We went through two main items, the first being the preliminary audit for our 23-24 results. We talked about what to do and just affirmed the board's commitment to transferring some of the surplus to capital projects, thereby making it such that we can take four projects, I believe, on, on for, for capital work. We also, and, and so the actual transfer will be on the agenda for the board to approve at our next meeting on September 17th. And then in a bit of exciting news, I just wanted to give Sarah and the team, or excuse me, I'm so sorry, Ms. Lager and the team, kudos for getting the Certificate of Achievement and Excellence in Financial Reporting, Big Mouthful, as presented by, what is it called, the Government Finance Officers Association, right, for the 2022-2023 school year. So kudos to you guys again for doing that.
Thank you.
The second element, or the second item that we discussed was just the portfolio, so our investment portfolio. And we just got a overview again of just what our strategy is, what kind of the constraints are with regards to what we're able to invest in. And, you know, we, we talked a lot about the, the value of, of capital preservation, so meaning what we're investing in is going to be something that we're going to be able to, you know, have on a relatively liquid basis and be able to utilize to pay our bills, at the same time also allowing us to take into account, you know, how we can yield some positive gains as well. And as, you know, we talked about with regards to the audit, those gains were a function of actually how we came up with the surplus that we did. Barry, is there anything else that you want to mention?
I don't know.
Okay.
That was good.
Not, not that, not sure if this matters for purposes of the entire board, but at least for folks who want to attend the Finance Committee meetings, we did court, we did change our, I think it's our November meeting, to the Wednesday after Election Day. Just a, just a match of the board meeting. But that's-
Good move.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't want to be all alone.
I know.
Everyone would be loving it. All right, any other updates? We've got policy on our agenda.
So this isn't really committee, but as far as board volunteer opportunities, I have two things on the radar for the fall for us, but I haven't checked into them fully. So I will get back to you at the next meeting.
Okay. If you need, if we need to know before, I can send you a note out too.
Okay.
Or we can put it in Craig's report.
A couple of ideas bubbling, so.
All right.
Yeah.
Awesome.
A lot of planting ideas, yeah.
Keep doing it.
Got to go get hands on. I love it. I love it. All right, well, if there's nothing else, then we can move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second. All right, on the consent agenda, we have minutes from our last meeting, both open and closed from August 13th. We have the revised Personnel Report, and I want to recognize we have an accept the gift from the Partnership Financial Credit Union for school supplies at Sunny Hill Elementary. So appreciate their, their contribution there. Any questions? All right, let's do a roll call.
Leah Colister Lazari?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Diana Clapton?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Katie Caron?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Let's move on to our action items. I mentioned this one earlier. Do we have a motion to approve the amended Board of Education meeting calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so I mentioned it earlier. What this, what we're taking action on is to change the start time of the open session in our meetings going forward, starting on September 17th, to 6:00 PM. So we'd start our open session at 6:00 PM. Board will still meet beforehand, and if we need to go into a closed session, we'll probably more frequently be doing that after open session. more frequently be doing that after open session. Keep every, our community discussions at a little bit earlier hour.
Hey, Sandra, I'm sorry to, I just noticed this.
Uh-oh.
Well, no, it's actually just a question. So for October 7, our board retreat, does that need to be added to this?
October 7?
It's the board retreat, it's not a...
We would usually add that as a special board meeting.
Yes. We don't need to be in here, it's not a regular meeting.
But I will, but I will notice it as a special board meeting.
Okay. I'm just asking because I just see if a double crosses indicating early start to close for board itself about in prior periods. So...
We're doing it on a separate day instead of...
We're doing it on a different day.
Before a board meeting.
Okay.
Totally separate day.
So you see, like, April 2nd of this year, we met a little bit earlier, so that you see the double?
Right.
Understand the confusion, though.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I could see it either way.
So Jeanne, just to clarify, since it's not, we're not doing that meeting on an actual board meeting date, you'll just notice that separately?
We usually wouldn't put it on this, these are our traditional meetings.
A regular.
Got it. Thank you.
I know it's 4:00 PM, but did we say an end time for that meeting?
I think it's 6:00, right?
It's 4:00 to 6:00.
Four to six, and that's a Monday.
Yeah.
October 1st.
Yeah, 4:00 to 6:00.
And as far as I know, everybody's able to attend, so. But we're off of our motion topic.
There we are.
So I'll bring it back. I'll just repeat, starting September, should this pass, September 17th, we will start at 6:00 PM. All right, let's, the roll call?
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Diana Clapton?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. So September 17th, we will see you at 6:00 PM. And I just want to remind us that if we need to talk about this at the, in a couple of months to see how well it's going, we can do that as a, as a discussion item in one of our board meetings. All right. Let's see, where am I? Okay, so do we have, let's go to our next action item. Do we have a motion to approve the school resource officer contracts, SRO contracts?
So moved.
Second.
All right. So you want to talk to this, or do you want me to talk through? Go ahead, go right ahead.
Okay. You know, we've had a longstanding relationship with having a school resource officer at Barrington High School, actually for over 20 years. We've had a high school officer present. Last year, we made the decision to have resource officers at both of our middle school campuses. Those agreements have been in place on an annual basis. The agreements that are on the agenda tonight would help solidify our, our ongoing relationship to extend it for a three-year period, rather than bringing these to both the village board and, and our school board meetings on an annual basis. I, I think these positions have been very well received to help our students navigate different situations and have an educational component and a different relationship with law enforcement in our area as one of the outcomes, and having them be also seen as a trusted adult and resource when students or parents or community members are looking for some direction from a law enforcement, and having that dynamic in place at our schools, I think, has been an asset to the community, so.
I think we've gotten the feedback that it's been a real asset.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It's also give us clarity for the next three years on, on the cost as well.
Cost, yes, yes. We can plan accordingly then with three years.
With modest increase every, every year.
Correct. Yep.
Any other questions or comments? All right, let's do a roll call.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Diana Clapton?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve the second reading of the board policies that I can read through as we get into discussion? Do we have a motion in a second?
I'll motion.
Second.
All right. You want to?
Sure.
Review these again one more time and give the updates that we've received? I've got a couple of questions, I'm sure others do.
Yep. So at first reading, we had a conversation at Policy Committee, and then we actually had that full board conversation at our last meeting, looking specifically at the policies that are connected to the requirement for school districts to adopt and have the 2024 regulations for Title IX in place by August 1st, right? So we're already a little bit past that deadline, but we're working hard as, as a committee to make sure that we're reviewing these. Part of the conversation at both the committee meeting and then at, at the full board table was around policy 2260 and 2265. When we make changes as a board outside of the press suggestions, we typically highlight those in blue. So if you look at first reading edits, the first attachment that's in Board Docs, and you open up that policy, one of the things that we talked about was at the start of page three, where it talked about the investigation process and notification. We already have existing policy language with our bullying policy, 7180, that addresses notification of parents. So one of the things that we discussed was making sure that this policy and our, our bullying policy are in alignment, so that that notification piece to parents is present in the board. So that's why it's highlighted in blue. Any questions on that one before I go to the 2265?
No, thanks for making that change. I've got to change.
Okay.
I didn't do anything, so thank Dr. Berhein.
That was, that was a quick discussion on 2:260 Uniform Grievance Procedure.
Correct.
Just make sure I read all the titles, make sure we read them while we go through.
Okay. Thank you for keeping me on track, I'll be better. The, the other policy that you'll notice that's been updated based on the conversation at the board table was 2:265 Title IX Grievance Procedure. How'd I do?
Very good.
Got it, right. We had some conversation about the new 2024 did not include as much language in the policy itself related to defining harassment that's sex-based. And so we went back and looked at some of the procedures and exhibits that are attached to this policy, and pulled language that provided greater definition from the procedures and pulled that forward. So again, it's highlighted in blue because this was something that we discussed, that we felt was important to provide additional definition and guidance in the policy itself around sex-based harassment. So you'll now see that we've listed the reference there and then have provided examples, such as quid pro quo harassment, hostile environment harassment, and then any specific offenses such as sexual assault, dating violence, domestic violence, and stalking. Those are all mentioned in more of the procedure side of this, but we pulled it forward into the policy. Hopefully that meets some of the discussion and expectations that we had at the board table last time.
Definitely helps.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's worth, I, I know we're here on a second reading, but we know that this is an ongoing issue that is being litigated. Twenty-six states have chosen not to move forward with these changes. I have to, if I'm being honest, I'm still very hesitant to move forward. I know that there's risk on either side of this. According to council, they do expect a decision sooner rather than later. So I guess I'm still of the opinion that I don't personally see, I don't want to go against what we've been told, but I, I guess I still am hesitant to move forward when this is under such duress everywhere, and we know that decision is imminent.
Let's build on that, like, what's the risk if we wait? I guess I'm not super clear on the risk if we wait.
Because we have a current policy in place.
Right.
And we've been trained on the new policy.
Correct.
So we could hit the ground running when we adapt, adopt.
Yeah.
It's not like we'd be Title IX-less.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think some of the discussions we had in the past, there's risk both ways. So the risk of, of, so all schools in Illinois have been asked, right, we need to have the new 2024 regulations in place as our, as our policy update. The risk is if we have a situation that occurs, right, and there's, I guess, the district doesn't have the current policies in place, we would be open to a suit that someone could bring forward because we, as a school district, don't have, and we haven't met that requirement. Again, I think everybody at this table, everybody on, on our staff, we wish that the answer was there, because it's really putting individual districts in a hard place. And I understand the, the concern, and I can see both perspectives on this, because there is risk for both. There really is.
And so the risk on the other side is if we're one of the named districts and we do adopt, then being pursued from that angle, too. So, so litigation either way is possible.
If I understand correctly, if we have the policy in place and a student is harassed in these categories, then we're able to respond in the proper manner. So it's, I think it protects students if we, if we pass the policies, if I'm understanding correctly.
So I guess that's my question, Leah, because I would absolutely not want to leave, agree with you, students at risk. I, I guess, from a legal standpoint, I want to know if we are, are the 220 Title IX, is that nullified right now?
Is the, no.
Or the current Title IX?
The 2020?
Right now, the 2020 Title IX is our policy, because we haven't made a decision either way.
And that would still be in place even if we chose to wait for the litigation to be settled?
Yep.
So students are still being covered under that policy?
So I, if I can, if I may, I just want to just, I'm just going to read this, because I want to make sure it's clear what, what we're voting on here, because it's really just a change in the, it's opening up the definition of, of sex-based harassment, right? It means a prohibited conduct, which is a form of Title IX sex discrimination, and means sexual harassment and other harassment on the basis of sex, right? So we still are, are covering your sex assigned at birth, right? That also includes any harassment based on sex stereotypes, sex characteristics, pregnancy or other related conditions, sexual orientation and gender identity, right? And that is quid, as you mentioned, Dr. Winkelman, that's quid pro quo harassment, as well as hostile environment harassment, and then specific other offenses that you listed. So it's just opening the definition of it, to make sure that all students are protected.
I think where I'm getting a little bit tripped up, because as read from a harassment perspective, makes total sense to me. It's more on the discrimination piece and opening up the definition of discrimination, because I'm trying to figure out, are we not covering all of our students in our uniform grievance policy? Like, is there something that, it, it, it concerns me, because I think, are we opening up a door that then on the flip side, we're doing potential harm to other students in the district if we begin to open this up from a Title IX? And that's what, that's what I'm honestly wrestling with, because harassment is like, harassment across the board, everybody deserves to be protected, every, in any way. But it's the discrimination piece, and like, what that means, there's access to based on these definitions of all, and that's what I'm trying to wrestle with in my head to better understand.
Diane, I agree with you. I think that's where my struggle is as well, because I've gotten various questions from parents asking, and I'm not, honestly, I'm not sure how to answer, because there, I think there's that ambiguity, right?
Yeah.
I guess, you know, Dr. Winkelman, if it's fair, could I just ask the question a little more plainly? You know, in this context, are we able to put a little more detail behind what harassment means, above and beyond just the ways of harassing? And, and, and here's a question that one of the parents asked me, what I thought was really good, but I could not answer, which is, you know, it's very cut and dry, you know, if there's harassment, actually, I take it back, it's not very cut and dry, but it's a little more understandable if there's harassment with high school students or the like, someone that's older and more mature. But if something like this occurs at, like, let's say kindergarten, where, you know, a child doesn't understand even, let's just call it gender assigned at birth, I mean, would there be a situation from the school district where we would be, you know, implementing Title IX procedures because a five-year-old didn't understand what gender was?
Yeah, I think everyone on these, anytime we're working through the, we're doing that deep dive, we're doing the investigation, we're trying to unpack exactly what has occurred, what was the intent, what was the severity?
Yeah.
All of those things come into play. So it's really hard to take those hypotheticals, because you don't really have the rest of the story.
Sure, I hear that.
And again, you know, I think legal counsel has, has provided the guidance that, you know, the requirement still exists, and it's hard to get around that, but I understand the concern of adopting something that still is being decided. I just want to reinforce to the board, whether we use the 2020 guidance or the 2024 guidance, a lot of the steps that we're going to take as an administrative team and as our staff is working through is to make sure that students are being protected and that we're addressing if harassment has occurred. So I just want to be clear, like, that's still going to happen, and a lot of the steps are the same from the 2020 guidance to the 2024.
But, but, no, I hear you, but it, but if we implement this and a parent argues that their child has been, and I'm going back to my example, like, a five-year-old here, we do need to implement a Title IX study? Is that, is that the right way of saying it?
No, because we're still going to follow the process, that we've got complaint managers that are going to work specifically on the situation itself and start to uncover what, what did occur in that situation, and what is the correct remedy and support necessary? It may look different for how you approach that with a five or six-year-old.
Sure.
Than if you're dealing with a 17 or 18-year-old.
Right. Okay, okay, that's, that's good to hear.
It's the remedy and the support that adjusts.
So, so there is some discretion there?
Like, to complaint man, they're like, waiting to say something.
Yeah, no. Yeah, please.
I'm sorry, I was, I was, I addressed this, I'm sorry.
No, please.
So in a situation like that, that you're kind of referencing in regards to, to a five-year-old, for example, there is a sexual component to when an individual, when we look at a Title IX complaint, so there's kind of these thresholds that, you know, so it would have to be sexual in nature. So it would, there would have to be a sexual component of that between two five-year-olds, and to understand, to really be able to, you know, have that comprehension of what was hap, what's going on. And at that point, we would determine, is it really Title IX?
Okay.
So it's possible that that, that what, that interaction wouldn't even...
Okay. So that's helpful.
Be raised to the severity or the level for it to be Title IX. So it just would, it's hard to say, because it's not necessarily hypothetical.
Sure, of course.
It would depend on the situation. So there's a lot of factors that we look into when a title, when something is possibly a Title IX complaint, and part of that is having a conversation with the student and the parent to understand intentionality, to ask questions like that. And then we would offer, regardless of if it's Title IX or not, supportive measures to support that child, both the alleged possibly offender and, as well as the alleged victim.
So can I, if I could just kind of repeat what you said, though?
Yeah.
It does sound like administration has a, administration does have some discretion, and, you know, just kind of following up on 260, parental involvement would be part of the process as well?
Yes, yeah. We meet with the, the student and also the parent, either via phone or a formal meeting in regards to the situation.
Okay.
And it's the first step.
And then, and I know we had removed it from 2260, but in just reference to 7180, I believe it is.
Mm-hmm.
But, so I think the language in 260 originally was a little more stringent with regards to timing, so we, we chose to remove it. But this would not preclude our ability to facilitate an investigation just because we didn't contact the parent. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, so then I guess, if that's correct, then I guess there's, therein lies a little bit of a concern from, that I know some parents expressed as well, which is, you know, they have their five-year-old now, you know, being questioned, and they're not in the loop on, on what's going on.
But I think the, can I say one thing really quick?
The important thing to keep in mind with 2:00 and 260, the uniform grievance procedure, as well as the 2265, the Title IX grievance procedure and the notification of parents. We said in alignment with Policy 7180, because that does require us to notify families within 24 hours. And the reason why we need that 2265, the Title IX grievance procedure, is to help our district complaint managers determine if a complaint is Title IX. And we did put the definitions in the 2265. But to Dr. Winkelman's point, with our administrative procedure manual, we have very detailed procedures as well as exhibits that go in great depth about how to step through that. So for example, the degree in which the affected complaintant's ability to access the education. And so it is very well spelled out within our procedure manual and in our exhibit to help differentiate the uniform grievance and, and Title IX.
Okay, that's definitely helpful. Okay.
Can I also ask just for clarification? I think there's really some misinformation out there. As our, our speaker that, you know, that was, spoke at the beginning of the meeting, 2265 does not deal with sports, teams, and it doesn't do with curriculum.
Correct.
It, it's silent on those subjects. So, you know, it's, it's respect, and I think we're broadening the categories of the respect we expect of our students. But, you know, it's, I just want to be careful.
You know what, I actually, thanks for saying that, Barry, because I actually, that still hits a question you and I had talked about. With regards to training our educators, what is their role in all this? Is it, is their role just to report?
Yes, so they, when they think that something may be a Title IX complaint, they speak to the administrator and then myself.
Okay.
Dr. Carpenter informed of that, and we, based on that information, we gain information to determine if that really is truly a Title IX complaint or not.
Okay.
And then
Okay, that's, that's helpful. So, so to just say that differently, it's not the educator's responsibility then to adjudicate what's happening and not to educate, because again, it's not curriculum-based, so it's not going to affect how they, okay.
So even if there is a complaint around gender identity, right, that it could be Title IX, according to this policy, it does not open up a curriculum discussion in the classroom around gender identity. It's purely, as I understand it, it's purely around grievance procedure, around harassment, around, does this preclude a, a student from learning? And so, so it's, it's not, it's, it's completely based on protecting our students and not around curriculum at all. And it doesn't even open the pathway to a classroom discussion.
Well, and, and if I'm hearing you correctly, I think it protects our educators too because it doesn't put them in the precarious position where they are now arbitrating and adjudicating on their end, right? I mean, that's, I, I honestly, that's another concern because I know I've heard from
That's excellent.
certain folks as well saying, I don't want to be responsible for teaching a little five-year-old here, you know, something that admittedly is probably a parental responsibility.
Yeah, other than the reporting, so everyone has a
So it's just reporting.
Everyone in the district has a requirement to report.
Well, of course, yes, but this just provides you the
It's an administrator function to then step through, yes.
But the training that was facilitated last week was more about where, how to identify and when to, rather than how to, again, educate, you know, the five-year-old in question here. Okay, that's really helpful.
Can I ask a follow-up question on what Barry said, though? Because it, I think he said it doesn't pull in sports, but I think the language that was tripping me up in here was about access. Like, you cannot be excluded from participation in, but then it doesn't talk about what that means. Like, what are we talking about when we say those?
Yeah, where are you from?
I'm on the first page of 2265.
2265, okay.
So when it goes to sex discrimination prohibited, that paragraph is where?
The blue highlighted one?
It's not highlighted.
There's an edit version and then there's a non-edit version.
For 2265? Okay, hold on, let me flip back.
Diana, sorry, where, where are you again? I'm sorry, in 2265?
2265.
Are you referencing the, the first paragraph there under Title IX sex discrimination prohibited where it says the district employee
Yeah, that's it.
violates the, right, where a person engaged in conduct that excludes, is that what you're referencing?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a paragraph right after Title IX sex discrimination on the first page.
Okay.
Excludes from our participant. So part of Title IX is that it has to be, the, under the, kind of, it has to have kind of these components of either it's severe, pervasive, or objectively offensive, that it essentially denies an individual from participating, you know, or excludes them from school or anything like that. So it does, Title IX does have to meet one of those categories in addition. So as I mentioned, severe, pervasive, or objectively offensive. And then essentially, it would, if the individual feels as though they're being excluded because of the harassment on those bases. So that's how that works together. It isn't necessarily, I think maybe we're confusing it with athletics or something, but that's not the case. This could be denial from, like, classes
Okay.
because they feel as though, the individual may feel as though they're being bullied. That's where that comes in.
Okay, yeah, that wasn't super clear, so thank you for
Well, but to be clear, I think we should separate, that is already the law in Illinois, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it really doesn't have anything to do with Title IX. There is already a law in Illinois stating that you can participate in whichever sport, whichever, whatever you identify with. And so that's already, it's, it's separate from this, so I think we're nitpicking. I, I think what you, when we talked about this in policy too, what was so important to me is, this isn't just your everyday Suzie called Johnny a bad name. This is like you, like, where, it is really, so I think that where people are feeling they're going to be compelled in their speech and their communication, and it's, to, to get to the level of the Title IX complaint, it's not an easy thing. It's obviously something that should be addressed if it's up to this level, so.
And even in the 2020 policy, it's, it's stringent. That hasn't changed.
Yes, right.
Yeah, the, the part of the aspect that changed is the or. It used to be all three of those, and now it specifically is four. So severe, pervasive, or objectively offensive. And the 2020 was severe, pervasive, and objectively offensive.
Oh.
Part of the language change to protect more students.
Sure.
Does it have to have to meet all three of those thresholds in time?
Okay, not to belabor the litigation, but could I just ask one last question and then I promise I'll move on? Let's say this goes through, it doesn't go through, say they're like, nope, we're not doing, no one can adopt this. What happens? We just go unadopt it? We go back to?
Oh, you mean the litigation?
Yeah.
Right, it would, yeah, we'd have to follow the guidance of the ruling.
Okay.
Right, which could be that we would either remove certain, I don't know what the guidance is going to say. We could fully go back to the 2020 guidance, we could do some modified version. It, it depends on what parts or if they just take it as a whole.
Okay.
That's a good thing about our district, we're, we're current on our policies. We have a very high functioning policy committee. I think we're, you know, we're used to being able to be dynamic and flexible, right, with these topics and conversations. So I also want to re, you know, reassure the community too that, like, we, we are following this every day and we will adjust and we will bring this back together as a policy committee should. I mean, I was really hopeful that the three weeks between the last board meeting and now that there was going to be a decision.
Clearly.
There just wasn't. And, and again, we're all, all school districts are talking about it right now of, like, the sooner that can be decided so that we're not all kind of held hostage in the middle of this is, is, you know, going to be, I think, beneficial for all districts.
Yes.
So Dr. Winkelman, I have one more question too, sorry. With respect to implementation, it sounds like the education on this has already been done. Is that correct?
So we did training, because again, this is an administrator's responsibility, so we did training with our entire administrative staff this summer before the start of the school year.
How about our educators? Have they been trained as well?
Yes, so, but the training looks different for them.
Sure.
It's, it's again about recognition and reporting versus we're doing
Correct, the actual investigation, right.
Dr. Rivera was describing and all the procedures and everything that's attached.
Are there addition, I guess here's the, the million-dollar question, which is, are there additional investments we need to make to execute this outside of approving the policy?
No, I mean, we've already taken the steps to make sure that
So it's already done effectively, it just needs to be done and written then.
Is there any remaining pieces?
Okay. Okay.
I think it's also worthy of note that, just to make, this is kind of confusing. We're talking about a set of policies that'll address the, the same, the grievance procedures as well as what harassment is prohibited and then the staff development. But we are required to have a uniform grievance procedure as well as a Title IX grievance procedure. I just want to make sure that that's very clear.
Correct.
That, that's, that's a non-negotiable. We already have them both in place and we will need to continue to have them both in place.
Yeah, and they've both been in place for a while.
Yeah.
Title IX has its own specific, just like there's the uniform grievance list.
And I, and you know what, I'm sorry, one more thing. And I think there was a confusion at the, the policy committee because I think there was presumption that this could not be adopted. But you're telling, to clarify from the last meeting, I believe we had said that forensic has adjusted and indicated that we, this is something that we can fully adopt because that
Enforce.
Enforce, I'm sorry, enforce, thank you.
Yeah, that's the caveat, we're, we're supposed to adopt because we're supposed to have it in place, but there's a question about the enforcement.
I'm sorry, thank you, enforcement.
But we can. Enforce.
And we can, yes, okay.
Yeah, because again, these are, this is one of the board's policies. And just like all of our policies, we have the right. If the board goes through the process of first and second reading and takes action, it is our policy that's in place.
Okay.
And again, I'm hoping an answer comes soon so that we're not caught in the middle of, because we are, we are open to a lawsuit either way on this one.
I don't, I don't, I don't know what I'm going to do.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not really sure either, to be honest.
Let me just read through all the policies at the same time, so it's very clear.
Okay.
So we have 2260, the uniform grievance procedure, where we added in to make sure that we were doing the parental notification. That was a little bit of a concern, went on our first reading. There's Policy 2265, the Title IX grievance procedure, where that's where I read through that definition. That has been expanded a bit. Then we haven't really talked about the changes in 5:100, but the staff development program. Trying to remember exactly what was in that one. I just pulled it up here. I think it was just the references, definition, right?
Definition as well as the deletion of chronic health conditions of students because the conditions are listed out specifically within the policy as well as embedding the new requirement of the trauma-responsive learning environments and definitions of trauma included in our staff development program, which is effective in January of 2025. So those were the two other changes to that policy.
Thank you. And then the last two policies are about harassment, 720, harassment of students prohibited, and 7:185, teen dating violence prohibited, that also reference said definition. Is there anything in those two that you wanted to call out specifically? So, risk on both sides. Legal counsel is advising us to go ahead and move forward. Should there be a ruling, we would then come back, do a first reading again
Correct.
and then a second reading as we would, with any policy change.
Yeah, so can I just ask the question with respect to voting? If it's risk on both sides, I mean, can, can I move to hold the vote until there's a resolution? Especially since we're thinking that there's going to be one?
I would say if that's what you want to do, then you would vote no to adopt these.
Okay, so rather than abstaining, it would be voting no?
You could abstain or you can vote no.
Okay.
You can move to table, right, if you wanted to?
You could.
I guess that's actually what I'm suggesting, but do we vote to do that?
We'd have to get the two people that motioned to agree.
Are you tabling or are you just pulling one out?
I'm, I'm, I'm suggesting we table. If there's risk on both sides and we've done the work.
We do all of these policies that are on the agenda tonight and we take a vote, rather than, I think I heard you say pull them out.
I'm sorry, table.
These are all, or table, these are all connected to Title IX. So I would treat them as a collective group because I think it could get super confusing to adopt some, but not all of the policies
Agreed.
to Title IX. Right, so that way either we're, we're living with two, you know, the 2020 guidance or we're living with the 2024 guidance.
So a vote yes is to adopt them as they've been presented to us. And a vote no would be to say, no, you don't want to adopt them at this time. Essentially, an assumption would be if you, unless you state otherwise, that you would want to wait until clarification on the ruling. Is what I'm assuming you're voting no to, so if you're, something else, please state.
So after we finish voting and is, well, I guess it's moot if it passes, right? But if it doesn't pass, then we can move to table. Is that, is that the proper procedure here?
We would just continue with our policies as they are, in theory.
Yeah, we wouldn't need to
We wouldn't need a table.
because right now, because we haven't gone through the process to formally adopt 2024, we're using the 2020 guidance, so if we have a Title IX concern that's brought forward right now, we're still using the policy that's online that's been approved in the past by the board.
Is, is it fair to say that the policy we have online right now would protect any victim?
I think like Dr. Rivera said, it has the and instead of the or. So you have to meet all those three requirements instead of one of the three.
Okay, so that's, that's the trick, okay.
So the protection, so the protection isn't as tight, I think, I believe.
Yeah, no, okay, that's right.
So the risk is if someone that qualified for the or would have a issue, right, and bring it up, and we could put ourselves at risk because we don't have that protection in place. Say that right?
You did?
All right, are we ready?
No questions.
Diana, more questions?
All right, let's do a roll call.
Erin Chanding?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
No.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Diana Clapton?
Abstain.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
No. If I counted right, I think we have four yeses?
You do have four yeses.
We do have four yeses. Okay, so motion passes, we will adopt the policies as presented this evening.
Right. And I think what has been stated, we're going to continue to carefully monitor as soon as there's, you know, guidance or an outcome of the court case. Depending on the outcome, we would, I think everyone on the policy committee knows to kind of be ready to hold a meeting and pull our group back together, which we will commit to doing.
So policies stay on the alert?
Yep.
If there's an issue with attendance, I'll, you know, step in as I, or have an officer step in as, as needed to make sure we, we are timely.
Okay.
Sound good?
Sounds good.
All right, thank you, board. That was a very, very good discussion.
I know.
So let's move on to our discussion items.
Okay.
First up is safety and security update.
Teresa Reiki and Dr. Carpenter up to the front.
Welcome, Teresa.
Yeah, it's been a short hiatus. Been a while since I got to sit in my chair today.
Dr. Fuller, I know we adjusted the microphones tonight. Do they need to do anything different or we're handling it from the back?
I had heard from an audience member a meeting or two ago that sometimes the speakers are facing this way and the people in the audience can't hear them. So maybe audience, if you can't hear, raise your hand or something.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay.
Well, thank you, board, for, for allowing us to be here tonight. Dr. Carpenter and I get the opportunity to share the amazing things that have been happening in our district that pertain to safety and security. We worked with many individuals for, you know, the last few years and we get to share all the hard work that was completed by many individuals. And then Dr. Carpenter and I get to move forward with the privilege of also then moving forward and looking to the future. So thank you for letting us be here tonight.
I'm going to stop you just for a second. Jake, are you, are you picking it up in the, in the back? No?
No.
Oh, getting a new mic.
All right.
I don't know if it was just me, but I didn't feel like I was hearing it in the speaker system.
All right.
Can you hear, go, keep talking, let's see.
Should it be read?
Yes.
Yeah, perfect, okay. Wonderful. So of course, moving forward, we empower personal excellence in every learner. And with safety and security, our strategic priorities, where we really fall into is stewardship. And moving forward with the wonderful things that are coming out of safety and security, you know, we're maintaining fiscal responsibility. We have a multi-layer approach in which I'm going to talk about tonight with the physical security, the technology, the training, and the community communication. Protect and connect, definitely. Commitment to improvements. Continue to evaluate and adapt and collaborate with stakeholders. So we're going to start with the physical security updates that have been happening throughout our district. And the first thing that we're going to talk about is our new secure entrances at the high school. So in the past, we've had one beautiful entrance that was door number 45, which now is number, door number one, which is our main entrance. In addition to that, we have an additional secure entrance that is located at the north end of the building where all students entering off the buses or from the Field of Dreams access that door in the morning and in the afternoon. We also have an additional secure vestib, or entrance in entrance 34, which is located to the west side of the building, and that is where the athletic entrance is. is located to the west side of the building, and that is where the athletic entrance is as well. And students that are being dropped off by their parents in the morning, or coming from the senior lot, go through that door. And then, of course, we still have our main entrance, which now is door number one, where all our walkers come into place. So these are our beautiful pictures. The one to the left that you're looking at is back around the back where the buses drop off, and then, of course, our athletic entrance. They're so pretty, especially with the canopies just up. When you walk into those wonderful entrances, we have our secure vestibules, and here you'll see our main entrance for Barrington High School, and then we also have a secure vestibule at Grove. And these are incorporated into all our buildings, and we have the wonderful transaction window that you can see in both of these. These are secure transaction windows, and really what this allows for us to do is enhance our security, streamline interactions with the population, with our community and individuals and visitors. Secure exchange, so when parents are coming in, instead of disrupting and, and coming through and having a lot of traffic, each secure vestibule is set up with either being able to give a piece of paper sliding through, through the transaction window, or we also do have compartments and shelving that parents could come in, leave a note on Suzie's lunchbox, leave it out there, and then it gets to the student without having to interrupt any of the operations for the day. And then also with our visitor protocol, so we still have individuals that come in that have to follow through with our software in order to make sure that we do all our checks and balances and get their purple lanyard. Additionally, we now have lockdown and panic buttons at each school, at least two of them, located in the front office and also in the principal's office. There's two different types. So here are pictures, to the left you see our lockdown, that there actually is a cover over it, so it's not really just easy to push, you have to actually lift up the cover and push it. But then we also have to our right, our panic button, which is underneath the desks in the front office. The difference with these is the lockdown button works to put our building into compartmentalization with locking interior doors other than the classroom. It does not call dispatch, that still needs to, we still need to follow through with calling nine-one-one or using our radios to hit that, but it allows us to work with any emergencies or any threats that are within the building. Our panic button, however, that is a silent panic button that anyone can push that if they feel the need to call dispatch, and it goes to dispatch directly. With talking with the lockdown buttons and pushing those buttons, we have compartmentalization of doors, and this has been a big task that has been completed through each school. And with this, it enhances security and it's able to control access to certain areas and locations of the building. This is great for not only threats, but emergencies too. Fires, or we have a flood, or if we need to really move the population in a certain way and have a certain traffic flow. It also controls egress that, like I said, helps guide the flow of traffic, so we want to take, you know, keep a certain part of the building closed down and not go to that area, that allows us to help with this. It also limits movement of individuals, but then can also provide safe zones for students and staff. Along with the maintenance pieces, we also have classroom safety features, which have been in play for quite a few years, but this is just to bring to the attention of the board here and just people in general to know what's located in the classrooms. So we have in our emergency backpacks, which have all the things that we need in order to, if we have to go outside for a fire drill, if we have to relocate, it has the pieces and the resources for survival pieces, tarps, snacks. It also has the classroom action guide too, that goes along with all the details on what you need to do in certain situations, which I'll talk about that in a little bit. We've also had a universal room key system replaced at all the buildings this year, which allows each teacher to have a master key that opens up every internal classroom door, and also any internal doors that might have to close due to a lockdown. An additional layer is the O key, which has been in place for a while, and this was the ability to lock the door from the inside, so that if there is a threat, this is just another layer, if we keep our doors locked at all times, more than likely we'll not have to use it, but let's say that something's not working correctly, or oops, we forgot to lock the door, that also gives you the ability to lock the door from inside. And everyone, really all teachers, have that on them. And then lockdown key, or, we talked about that, sorry, and room locator. So every room has a location, and they'll, they're able to know that, what room they're in, so that they can, if someone's calling nine-one-one, or if we're trying to find where an threat is or an emergency is, it's easily located so we could get to them in time. Boliers were also put in, not all our buildings had them, and throughout the years, we have been able to put in boliers. Some, or some buildings only have one set of them, but for example, at the high school or at the middle school, you'll see a few sets of boliers, and this really just helps for pedestrian safety, it helps with vehicle control, and then it also just protects our assets, our buildings and, and our grounds and, and those pieces. We also have added the security gate at the high school. So this is new, and this has been in play for about a month. This is just an additional security piece that controls access as well as enhances monitoring. So this goes to the back of and goes around the side, and this is where all our buses and our deliveries go through. So they go through here, each individual that has access to the bus company, buildings and grounds, they have access to it, and if you look to the picture to your right, you will see the monitor. So there is also an access key where you put your badge up, that will allow you to go in and opens up the gate, but then what we also have there is a video monitor that deliver, people who are delivering or individuals that need to get back there, they can hit that button and it goes directly to the front office. And also, we have two places, just in case one person's not sitting at one of their desks, where we can talk to the individuals and actually see them through in order to give them access to the, to behind the building. It just also helps with traffic management, and it also deters any threats. So those are our physical pieces that have been updated. Moving into the technology security updates, we've had some amazing pieces. Jason Bryant has been working closely with our vendors and with buildings and grounds in order to make sure that everything is, is running smoothly. We have our card readers, which are at each buildings, and every staff member has a card, every educator has a card to get in and out of the buildings, so we know who's in and out of the buildings, but then it also allows you to go through some of the pieces throughout the, the school, to utilize that. So that's how people have access in and out of the buildings. It's highly encrypted, so you can't really, you know, break into using this or copy these cards, and then it's highly secure. We have cameras throughout our district, so we don't have nine hundred cameras, but we do have nine hundred camera views, in which we are able to look at all different angles, and if you look at these pictures, we have, you know, an aerial view where we know where all the cameras are, we're looking at out onto our fields, into bigger areas that we have a lot of people. We have views into the hallways, views on the outside, and then also that awesome last one that's in the bottom right-hand corner, that's our bird eye view, and we can actually move that around and then actually see straight on, almost like the three D with Google, to if we have to do any monitoring or have to get any information. There's an intercom system that is hooked to the, the cameras, which I'll talk about in just a minute, and all, all schools have these, and BHS cameras have been replaced now with the HD cameras. What also is helping with the cameras is that we're able to keep an eye on if doors are open for too long and get alerts that way, and then also, we're working with additional software that could help us also with weapon detection. And that's from the outside perimeter. We have door contacts, so all D two twenty doors have contact points, so that's where you need your card to get in and out. Campus security at the high school and the middle schools, and then office staff at the elementary schools have their, the capacity to look at the doors, to open the doors, and then also get alerts if the doors are open for a long period of time. It pops up in the corner and says, this door has been held open for so long, and it gives you a little sign with a little red mark, so that you know why is that door being propped open, who's propping it open, and trying to figure out if it's a threat or if it's just not working correctly. Radios, we have more than three hundred and fifty radios across the district. All radios have the ability to, to talk across the district. We had training with the front office, there is an overall dispatch button on there too, that they can call dispatch in case of emergencies, and when that happens, it also comes to Craig's office, Dr. Winkelman's office, and we know if there's any emergencies that are happening out in the field. With that being said, between the cameras and the doors, we really have twenty-four-hour monitoring. Between individuals, myself and Jason, we have access to be able to look at any of the cameras in the doors at any given time, but we do have six hundred cameras that are deployed out there, and all of those are hooked and named throughout our system in order to be able to go and find them quickly and get the information that we do need. So training and community communication. So Dr. Winkelman and Sandra talked about Safety Week that's upon us starting next week. This is a time for us to really have a universal training and universal messages going out district-wide. We had our, we have our video and drills completing, completed each day. Each day we have a theme, if you want to go into more on the details here, but with working with SAM and getting newsletters out daily for the community, what they can do with conversations at home with their children, what the community can talk about, and then also what teachers and staff can really work with the students to make sure that we're all on the same page and we're getting the same message. This is also a great way to get some of our annual emergency plans completed and also reviewed by law enforcement and administration in the district. We do have a critical incident drill coming up this year, and that's our big run, fight, hide. I'm sorry, did I say that wrong? Run, hide, hide, no, I, yep, okay. Run, hide, hide. Run, hide, fight. Thank you. I'm saying it, I'm getting it all. We complete, it's right in front of me. We complete that, but we also do additional training at that time with Stop the Bleed, where we actually have, you know, an inter-agency collaboration with our fire, with our police, we have them come and help us, we, paramedics come, we have individuals who, it's a real-life scenario in planning, and we get really into the details. We're gonna start planning that coming up, and that will be in January, one of the in-service days, and it is right now slotted for Prairie. Additionally, when I was talking before, in our safety backpacks, we have classroom action guides. These classroom action guides really allow the teachers and the administrators to all understand what we're looking at. It's the standardized terminology, it's the detailed expectations, but then it also gives us some ideas in post-drill and emergency discussions to talk with the students and with any parents if there's any questions. The biggest thing that does come into play is our common safety terminology, and here is just having that consistent communication, knowing the difference between run, hide, fight, hold in place, secure the building and teach, evacuation, severe weather, and lockdown. And what Dr. Carpenter and I are working with the building principals right now is to make sure that they create a presentation that they go over with their staff, just to reinforce what the expectations are, to ask any questions, to make sure that we're ready in the case of an emergency, and that it's, everyone has everything they need right at their fingertips and are able to understand and how to read the expectations. We have our Barrington Safety two twenty websites, which all our district information is found here. We have emergency tips for parents and guardians, and of course, when we are communicating that there is an emergency or anything happening, we are going to be communicating through IC and this district website. On this district website, we have our Safe to Help, it's labeled see something, say something, you hit that sticky button and it will take you to Safe to Help information. Here, it can be students, it can be staff, it can be parents who can give the anonymous tip, and what's amazing with this is that it comes directly to the correct people that are set up in the system to get the alerts, so that we know what we're dealing with and how we need to handle it, which I'll talk about that in a, in a slide ahead. Safety Week's all about here, and then any additional safety information is found here. Safe to Help is our twenty-four-seven reporting system, and this is exactly what it looks like on the back of all students' cards, they know how to report here, it is working. This is confidential tips, you can also leave your name, or you can name the individual if you have any concerns with that. It does alert the system, it alerts the admin that are hooked to the buildings, but if it does go to a certain level, then it also goes to law enforcement, and it actually, if there is anything that has to do with harms to oneself or with harms to others, that is, if it reports correctly, phone calls are made, it doesn't just sit there on the web, it, you, it is quick response time. All right, finishing up with what we're looking at moving forward, we are privileged to be working with a national security guru, Paul Timm, who is actually a, yeah, community resident, thank you, I had a, a note there, whose students, or his kids did go to school here. So he is working with us, and he has been working, he worked with Austin Johnson last year, and really what he is, he comes in from a perspective from a nationally known security guru and works to do audits and assessments of each building. We were lucky to have him look at the high school last year, along with an elementary lines and a middle school station. He is coming in September this month and working with me to also train side-by-side with me, so that I can understand and go through the, the tool that he uses that, you know, allows us to do an audit, we look through all the safeties, there's layers that we go through, that the perimeter, the inside, and then any resources, and then we work with the principals after that to conduct the safety audits and to go through with any additional things that we might need to change, give kudos, because you'd be amazed at all the amazing things that are happening out there that the principals have in place, but also to celebrate, you know, the things that have occurred and that have been incorporated to keep our kids safe. The evaluation process is called PASS, it's Partner Alliance for Safer Schools, and we use the safety and security guidelines when walking through. So it's ongoing training, it's monthly assessments, it's expert collaboration, continuous improvement and annual summaries. We're also looking at district-wide reunification plan, which right now all schools have a relocation plan, so all schools within their crisis plan handbook, they know where to go for relocation. This is just making sure that we have the most efficient evacuations, clear communication, site readiness, and the training that we need to bring to all staff in order to have the resources and be equipped in case of emergencies. So this will be a big goal that my department will be working on to make sure that we put in place moving forward and actually having a district-wide reunification plan. And that was it.
Wow.
That was, there's a lot of things, I don't want to take all credit, but it's, it's awesome to brag about what has been happening out there.
Questions from the board?
I just want to say thank you, I mean, this is amazing, and there's a lot of levels of thank you of this, you know, the community for the recents and dollars, the staff, the admin, it's, it's a lot. A couple of things that jump out that I know we've done recently that is, I think, really helpful is the common safety terminology, I think that's helpful for families to know and to keep educating about that, because I know there's been talk of PTO presidents in the past about how can we make everybody know what's going on better. I think Safe to Help, I think you guys didn't, you know, celebrate that enough, I think that's something that's really working that, that we don't talk about, but it really is, and it's saving, saving lives and helping kids and, you know, helping families, it's important. I have one small question.
Sure.
And this is something that came up in different events, in different years. Do we train our substitute teachers? Because they're- Because they're in a different place and a different room with a different key, with a different evacuation. And it can be a lot.
Let's make sure that that's correct, what you said.
Yeah, no, we do train them. What we could look into is inviting them on the day that we do an actual critical incident drill. I know that they have not been there in the past. But they also, when they come in, they get a badge that they check out at the front desk along with a low key and with a master key. So, they do have those pieces, and they've been taught how to use those pieces. But then they also have their training with Monica at the start of the year to go through. I know in the past, we did big, where we had law enforcement come in. So, I will check with Monica to see what we have done in the past and where we're at with that. Thank you. You're welcome.
I did notice that we had at least long-term subs at the opening day event.
Yep.
That was good to see.
Yeah. I would agree with Leah about, well, everything, but the terminology too, I think is so important. And can I, like, I know I found it. I gotta be honest, I had to click through a few things to get to it on the website, which is not hard, but I would almost push that out during the Safety Week too because I think it's so important for parents to understand those because I think we all panic when we hear soft lock, lockdown, whatever, or hold in place. And I think understanding what those really mean would help. Obviously, we're all still gonna be worried, but help alleviate some of the initial panic if people really understood exactly like where the threat is. And I'm not saying it's, I just, once you get to it, it's very easy to find, but sometimes we all know that people aren't gonna take all those steps.
Speaking back on there, help parents don't come to where the threat is. It's the worst thing you can do, you know? Let things happen.
I think, oh, go ahead, sir. I was gonna say, I thought it was really helpful when Dr. Winkelman, on day two, when we had the, when you sent out the Secure the Building and Teach, that that was the mode we were in, and then also sent out the chart. I think that helped us understand, okay, it was, it's kind of in the middle, right? And like, we're still gonna keep going with our day, but we're taking all these extra precautions. We're not sending certain kids home on certain routes, that kind of thing. And so, I agree, I think that has been really, really helpful. And if we can keep doing that, if there is some kind, like, you know, something similar where there's a hold-in-place situation or something like that, that was really helpful to me and I think to a lot of our families as well. And my other question, it seems like you're, you're kinda coming into this role really well and enjoying it. Thank you for this. Real, a small question, I just am having flashbacks to like how many times the fire line got pulled when I was a kid accidentally, or maybe not by some kids. I'm assuming the lockdown and panic buttons aren't super easy to access and they wouldn't be, you know, accidentally pushed or like, you know?
Yeah, no, yeah, no, you actually have to lift up with the lockdown, the panic, where it's, where they're located, they're away from. So, you really need to look for it and push it in an emergency. Yes.
You just don't need to say what those exactly are.
We don't need to say what that, it's not super easy.
They're in spaces occupied by adults.
Okay, thank you, thank you. That's reassuring.
Compartmentalize also, or just the?
No, they do not.
They don't?
No, they do not. They just call dispatch right away.
There is one right behind you.
Yeah, there is.
Oh, actually, okay. It's where adults are.
You have to remember with that though, if that is pushed, that just closes the doors and locks them. We still have to call nine-one-one or hit the emergency button. So, if that were to happen, it's like, okay, that's not good, but we don't have a slew of law enforcement or firefighters coming thinking that there's an issue. There's a second layer to that.
And the reversal of the compartmentalization is fairly easy should there be some kind of accident.
Yep, and I can do it all from my phone.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, now that you just said that, so let's say there's a power outage or something like that. I'm assuming, then what happens if this is all?
We learned it at the high school.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
It does, it works. Yeah, it, it, it works. Yeah, it closes, power outage, it will close and black, so.
We have generators that will keep all of our emergency lights, and there's very specific things that our generators are always gonna be on backup for.
Good to know.
Yep.
We don't want to lose certain key functions.
But what was amazing when it happened at the high school not too long ago is all the teachers had their keys, so they were able to open those doors with those keys if they needed to. So, they were still able to walk through, and it wasn't when students were there. It was before students came.
I had a slight question, going back to the very beginning of the presentation. We talked about the secure vestibules and the transaction windows.
Mm-hmm.
So, thank you for the secure vestibules. I know that they have been lack, you only mentioned a couple of schools. It's because they didn't have them at the beginning of the referendum. So, thank you for completing and making sure we have all of that. My question is, you talked about the new entrances to the high school. I believe the two new entrances also have a transaction window, is that correct?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Yeah, all secure entrances have a transaction.
They all have a vestibule and a transaction.
I shouldn't say that. Every school has a secure, one secure entrance with a secure vestibule. The high school has three of them.
And schools that have main entrances, like Grove now has two vestibules. Before, it only had one, correct? Right, that was, Grove was like the last school to get, to get the safety features. So, I wanted to make sure that, so thank you for that and make sure that I asked it.
We did a reconfiguring at some buildings to make sure that every campus had the same exact safety features and standards because some were better than others. So, some didn't have them, and we added them. And some we renovated and made sure that everyone had the same features.
You guys, I'll ask my other questions. So, are there any other, any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. It was great to be here.
Nice job.
Have a great week next week.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reiki.
Thank you, Dr. Carpenter.
You did a fantastic job.
I agree. So, next up is information about our referendum.
Josh is staying and hooking up, and Samantha's coming up. There we go. My first classes.
Hey, well, moving on to community outreach. So, we completed our, our community engagement phase and have moved into, in earnest, our community outreach. And so, tonight, Sam and I are here to talk about what that's going to look like really over the course of the next seven weeks. And that seems like a long time, but it's gonna go by very quickly. And there's a lot of fun events that we have planned for the community outreach. So, let's, let's, let's go. So, yes, a lot of events. We have thirty-plus events that we have planned thus far. And those run the gamut from community organizations, local municipalities. As mentioned earlier tonight, we have the four big ones. That's what, that's what we're calling them now, the four big ones. Because those are, not only are they the community outreach meetings, but they also have tours associated with them. So, we're calling them aptly named, the four big ones. And then we also have, we also will have a meeting with Spanish translation. And then we have also scheduled ourselves, and our PTOs have been nice enough to invite us to upcoming PTO meetings over the course of September and parts of, and the first part of October.
So, there are a lot of ways that we're sharing all of the information here over the next several weeks. One is our referendum website, which launched right after the August thirteenth board meeting. So, a lot of information on there if you take the time to go through it. Besides listing the upcoming community meetings, we also have that three-D animation of the community auditorium on there. People can also fill out a form if they have questions they can ask, and then Josh and I will answer those questions. There's an FAQ section. There's more details about all of the projects included in this referendum, renderings. There's a tax calculator so people can log, go on there and figure out their actual tax impact if they plug in their information if the referendum passes. And then there is also information for voters, which Josh is gonna talk about.
That's a little segue into the next slide. On, on the website, under the voter registration button is information about how community members can request a vote by mail and ballot, in-person voting, when does that start for our temporary sites? And then also, when does it start for our permanent sites? There's a QR code there that will take you to the office of elections. And also, just more information about voting precincts and stuff.
Okay, our marketing and media coverage. So, we have already gotten started with that. As you guys know, our back-to-school nights are up and running. The first back-to-school night was the first week of school, and then I believe they run through the end of September. So, at each of those back-to-school nights, we are handing out a two-sided handout, English on the front, Spanish on the back, with information and QR code to the website. We're handing those out to all the parents and guardians who attend the back-to-school nights. We also have a short, two-minute video from Dr. Winkelman explaining the referendum that is being shown at all of our back-to-school nights. We've also shown that on social media. We are going to have two mailers for this referendum. And so, the first mailer will actually be hitting mailboxes this week. They were just dropped off at the post office this morning. So, people might be getting them as early as tomorrow, or tomorrow at some point during the day. And that first mailer, I think you guys have that, yes, in front of you. Just, it advertises the upcoming community meetings and some basics on the referendum. The second mailer, which will be going out in October, will have more detailed information. And then as far as media coverage, we've had a couple of articles already. One in the Daily Herald, there was one in the Tribune just a couple of days ago about the referendum. And then in quintessential Barrington, in the September-October issue, I don't think that has hit mailboxes yet, but there will be a two-page feature on the referendum in there too, advertising the upcoming community meetings. And then, of course, we're using our social media platforms to advertise. We use Facebook, X, Instagram, Nextdoor. So, we'll be doing weekly social media posts about the referendum, the meetings, how to vote, all of that now through Election Day and creating events on, you know, Facebook and other platforms for the community meetings and Election Day, repeat voting.
So, our dates officially, there was some discussion about that earlier for the big, big meetings with the tours, starting next Monday, September ninth, we'll have our first meeting and tour at Barrington High School. And then we will have another meeting at Station Campus. And then also, we will have a meeting at Rhodes. And then we'll be back for homecoming for, for a tour before the football game and really, not only tour, but also to show off some of the great work that's been done to all the community and interested alumni. So, really excited about those opportunities. But it's going to be a busy next seven to eight weeks. But I want to thank Samantha for all of her hard work in terms of promotion and putting information out there for our community.
I think it's great to make sure the community is well-informed and can make an informed decision.
I was gonna say, no one can say that we're not putting the information out. Well, I know they will, but I will point them to this, this production.
Now, you can just hand your card.
So, that concludes our, our presentation for this evening. Just an overview of kind of where we're going.
Awesome.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
I, I have a question, and I don't know if this falls under your purview, but I just, I'm wondering whether we could lean on E.O. Sullivan for this or not. I was having a conversation with Doug Goldberg over Lake Zurich, and he was like, what's your, what's your plan when it comes to like listening to the no's? Right, like people who are like, "I don't, I don't want to for this reason or for this reason." Do we have any kind of strategy around that? And maybe this isn't your purview, but I'm just wondering, you know, for those who are hesitant or those who have reasons, or people who come with a whole bunch of financial questions, like what, what's our approach there?
Yeah, I think I can answer. So, I anticipate that, you know, we're now in the information, right? We're not gathering, but we're providing information about these topics and certainly tax implications or details about the projects or why some of them may have a preference for or against. I think those are gonna come up, and that's why we're providing all these opportunities so we can help provide information to address those concerns or get them to the right person. So, if someone has a deeper question about, you know, the use of the STEAM labs or programs, or has a deep question about the auditorium, we get them in that route, right? So that hopefully, they feel like they're informed. And so, I don't think anyone that's gonna show up is gonna be necessarily for or against. I think we're gonna get a blend, and then it's on us to help try to provide that additional information. I don't know if that totally addresses what you were asking for. I mean, that's the purpose of why we want to make ourselves so available and get people into these spaces. And then they make their decision.
Just to add to that, I mean, I just pulled up the website here on my computer, right? There's a place to ask a question. So, if you're not able to answer their question, you can certainly direct them to Dr. Winkelman, or, but they can also ask a question here, right? There's a set of facts on the auditorium and on the floor plan. There's a, there's an FAQ. There, there's a link to tax impact. There's a lot of information here, but if there's something missing, we certainly want to know about it.
Yeah.
Because we'll update them as we, as we find we've got something missing.
I think the FAQs will be an ongoing process of things that we hear, that we want to make sure that we're listening and then providing that additional detail if it's something that we haven't addressed.
That's great. And then are we able, are, are we going to talk at some point as a board about like our involvement? Because I, like, we, obviously, we want to be supportive, but I think there's a certain lane that we should or have to stay in. And I'm not super clear on what that is.
Our job is to inform, right?
Okay.
Yep, we've shared in the past as far as what you can and can't. I can attach more information again on, you know, the weekly this week for board members if you want to look at that information again, just to kind of give, you know, give a little bit more information for you to determine your level of engagement. We certainly invited the board to respond and let us know about which of the community, you know, meetings. You know, I think if the board is able to attend some of those meetings, I think that would be helpful because then you can actually hear the different perspectives from the community, which I think would then help give you some more information or talking points that you may want to share.
Could you do this for us? So, sometimes we're like, okay, he put that in his update on August fifteenth, and we can't remember. Can you just put it in your update every week?
Sure.
These are your talking points. And then we don't have, going forward, starting this week, so we always can just look at the latest and know that it's there. Is that good for?
Talking points and the parameters.
Yes.
For board members.
Yeah, like if it was, if it would be helpful for Katie and me to put on a hard hat and stand on those catwalk ladders, I'm sure we would, we would do it. But is, is that under our purview? I don't know.
You know, I would, you know, if you've got the list of meetings, PTO meetings, if you've been involved, if it's at your home school, might be good, you're a known entity to those, those PTO.
We could connect with them.
Did you ever have some of those meetings? Because I don't remember. I mean, I'm sure they were there at some point, but.
Yeah. I think it was even in.
Throw that in there too.
Yeah, that would be great.
The big four haven't changed. What do you call them, big four?
Big four have not changed.
Big four haven't changed.
Well, even opportunities in addition to the big four, I think it'd be great to get three of us at the meetings where there's only one, so that we're present, but, but.
Two or four would be preferred over three. You said three of us?
No, 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 two total, right?
He means the ones that don't have.
Oh.
Right, yeah, three meetings that only have one of us to add another one to each of those. So, we would only have two and no more than two, but.
We can have more than two.
We can have, we just can't.
It's four or more.
I think we.
I got you. Okay. But Dr. Winkelman, if there are opportunities like PTO meetings that you can see for, that it would be helpful for board members to attend, if you could include those in the weekly updates, and then we could see if we could be present.
So, I think over the next, you know, seven, eight weeks, we'll just create as part of the weekly report, a standing item. And it would include the talking points, parameters, and meeting dates. That way, it's just there for you.
Opportunities. That would. That would be great.
It'll just be there for you.
Thank you.
Make it a call-out as a specific referendum topic.
That'd be great.
I know we're just starting the school year, so something may be happening I hadn't heard yet. But is there an active group of community members that are kind of on the yes side that are mobilizing? Because I haven't heard yet. That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, my understanding is that there are groups that are being formed at this point.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, we're not supposed to be involved necessarily, but I just want to know that something on the positive side is happening.
The district's focus is on that information piece, right? And that's what we've presented tonight, and that's where our efforts are.
Is it possible if somebody from the community group is at our board meeting or at the big four meetings to make an announcement of how to contact them and get in touch and get involved and work with them?
Go ahead, Sam. As I say, there's a link right here. It says community engagement.
Okay. All right. So it's on the website. So go to the website and click on it and get it. Okay? Thank you. When we did this another time, we, as a board, we kind of had like, went to like the big meetings, kind of heard the story from Dr. Winkelman's telling it, or the superintendent telling it, and then we kind of could copy the story a little bit. It was helpful to go to those meetings and hear the presentation and hear some of the comments and the questions, because then you, you know, as Dr. Winkelman said, you can kind of be prepared for probably similar questions from people that you interact with. So it's really helpful. And then another thing that we did was we kind of thought of community organizations that like might invite us to come to their meeting to answer questions and us to give information. Like I think I went to like Lake Barrington's village meeting, and I think somebody else went to like, you know, Barrington Hills, and somebody went to like the different, like Fox Point or different groups. I don't know if as a board we're interested in doing that as a information, you know, talking point to groups in the community to talk to some other groups that may not be groups that have students in school or may reach out to other groups. It's a time commitment, but it's, you know.
Board is always welcome. When I share those meeting dates and opportunities, you know, Dr. Carpenter talked about, there's 30-plus presentations that are scheduled. But we do have the different village entities as part of that. So we will be there, whether board members can go or not, but you're always welcome to join us at those spaces. And the list is continuing to expand. I mean, literally, a couple hours before this meeting started, I received an email and I've got eight or 10 minutes at the VACC meeting later this month that they're giving for B2B. So we're adding to it, and so that's a document that we can share with the board too.
Thank you. Thank you for a lot of work, because this is a lot of work.
The community engagement piece here is past, not future.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
It doesn't really talk about what's happening now as opposed to what, how we came to, how we came to the question and community meetings, so.
I think once the campaign is up and we're running, it would be added there, right? If you want to contact somebody. No?
Yeah, I don't think that would be, we'd be able to put that on our website.
So what I said was incorrect then, as far as like get involved on the website? Did I understand it wrong? That it's not a link on our website?
It is not.
There is a link to what the advisory committee did.
Okay. So, yeah, so.
So maybe it's through the PTOs or, you know, again, I just wonder how to get the word out to the community who, if they don't have kids in the schools.
Yeah, I think you'll.
I'm sure that group is.
I was going to say, I don't want to speak for.
I'm not trying to do their work. I'm not trying to do their work.
I think you'll start to hear from the community group that's formed that is responsible for that work, if should they take it on. And that will become more known. I just want to reiterate, you know, the work of the district, since the board made that decision to put it on, we're focusing on preparing all of the information to make sure that the community has access and informed on this topic. But I would say more to come.
Thanks for clarifying that. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to muddy the waters here.
No, I think I'm a little muddy of myself. I was the one that muddied. So just was excited to see all these great, these great links and so forth.
Yep. Everything on there, it's all informational.
Yeah, right. Which is how it should be.
Yep.
I just want to ask the board, like, if you, if three people show up at the Roslyn Road PTO meeting, please be respectful and make sure we abide by the Open Meetings Act. First two people there, the ones that get to speak or what have you, and the other one needs to lay back. If we can just use that as a rule of thumb? I'm guessing we're not going to have three, but really should keep to two. Try to keep to two.
And we can, we can work together.
First come, first served, is what I'll say.
But however, on an individual basis, we can ask questions, we can answer. If someone comes up to us after to ask questions, we can.
Yes. But during the meeting itself, well, probably if we get three or four board members there, we would probably stop the presentation and just acknowledge that we have multiple board members. These two are the ones that are participating, that were either signed up or planned to come. The other board members are just there to observe, right? Just to, because I don't want any misunderstandings. So I'll probably stop.
I was more worried about the non-big-four meetings, right?
Yeah.
Those are the ones I'm more worried about, that we, because we just need to police ourself.
Yep. Yeah. If you come in, make yourself known at least so that I can kind of provide that clarification, so that there's no misunderstanding.
Are we okay to share the referendum website on our social media accounts? Like, could we push it out individually? We're okay, we're good to do that?
Probably be good to just share what's already, the district has already.
Yeah. If you're sending them to the district website, there's no, I mean, that's, again, it's all informational.
Well, the algorithm pushes it out wider if you post it originally, but we can also share as well. We could do, we could do both, right? And still be within our areas?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
For the comments.
All right, let me find out where we are. I think that was our last discussion. Yes, so we have agenda items. We've already mentioned some of them for the next meeting. The budget transfer that we talked about, solar contract, budget adoption. We'll have updates from kindergarten, vision cycle, and framework. I'll ask the question, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposition? All right, just checking. Thank you. We are adjourned.